Okay, I call this meeting to order Union County Board of County Commissioners Thursday, March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call a roll.
Certainly, Chair. Commissioner Garrettson.
Here.
Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Hudak.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Palmeri Muddet.
Here.
Commissioner Staten. Commissioner Vice Chair Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Mirabella.
Here.
Chairman, you have eight commissioners present for tonight's meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Please read the statement. I'm sorry, please read the, uh, lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and love of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Clerk. While we're putting our videos on, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statutes annotated Title Ten, Chapter Four, Section Ten of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year two thousand and twenty one, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstances to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year two thousand and twenty one in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year two thousand and twenty one with the Office of the County Clerk.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, good evening and welcome to another remote meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to start this meeting with a brief moment of silence in the memory of the eighteen people who were murdered in two mass shootings in recent days, including a police officer and women of Asian descent. Thank you. Uh, this Commissioner Board will never stop fighting for national legislation that keeps weapons uh, of war off the streets and out of our lives. Enough surely is enough. I want you to, I want, also want to draw your attention to statements from the Union County Advisory on the Board of the Status of Minorities in solidarity with the Asian community. And I quote, "The Asian, the advisory board takes note of the history of racism targeting Chinese and other Asian communities in our country." They are, they also describe a rise in hysteria and scapegoating along with misplaced blame regarding the COVID nineteen pandemic. We call upon all elected officials, community leaders, and residents to join our commitment to ensure that humanity triumphs over hate. They conclude with, "I am sure they are speaking for all of us." Now I want to import, speak to some important updates on the COVID nineteen vaccination program. I'm gonna run through these uh, pretty quickly, but all the details are on our website, ucnj.org. First, I want to encourage everyone to join a Zoom call on Monday, March twenty ninth at six P M. For a town hall on COVID nineteen vaccines. We'll be hearing from three medical experts who will discuss vaccination issues and important and the impact to the communities of color in Union County. This is a very important topic for our entire Union County family, and I hope to see you all there. A link to the registration page is on the county website, or you can go straight to bit.ly slash vaccine town hall ucnj. So please search that and sign up for that important town hall. Second, we're working to ensure that all eligible residents have access to a vaccine. We opened the COVID nineteen Vaccine Center at King University on January seventh. We are also sending pop-up vaccine clinics to senior communities. This week, we also extended our pop-up clinic to homeless shelters. If you're eligible for a vaccine, please keep checking the Vaccine Center website or contact the call center at nine oh eight, six one three, seven eight, two nine. I know it's frustrating because supplies are still very tight, but please bear with us and keep trying. More vaccines are coming our way, and we're opening new slots as soon as we receive that new allocation. Of course, if you need a free COVID test, please visit one of the walk-up test centers around our county. Look at the website for information on that, or make an appointment for the drive-through center at King. Moving to other services during the pandemic, I'm happy to report that the new online job posting and screening service is available through our Union County Works portal at ucajc.org. This new virtual service will help qualified job seekers connect with reliable employers in our area. If you need assistance with groceries during the pandemic, please come to one of our next drive-through food distribution centers at King University. The next one is at King in Union Township on Saturday, April third, beginning at eight A M. All commissioners and the county manager, the deputy county manager, many directors, all help distribute and sign up to, to help our community. So I appreciate everybody's help. Our Parks Department is continuing to offer outdoor nature programs for all ages. You could visit ucnj.org/ trailside for more information. And I'd also like to remind everyone that nominations are still open for the Union County She-Ro Award in honor of women who've made outstanding contributions to our community during this pandemic. For more information on that, please visit ucnj.org/women. Finally, on behalf of our board, I want to thank Senator Menendez and Senator Booker and all the members of New Jersey's Congressional delegation who voted in support of the American Rescue Plan. This game-changing piece of legislation brings over ten billion in federal aid to New Jersey, including more than two hundred and twenty-one million for Union County. It brings direct relief to many Union County residents impacted by COVID nineteen, such as stimulus checks, increase of the child tax credit, and additional unemployment benefits. The American Rescue Plan will also help our local employers and small businesses get back on their feet and help them ramp up efforts to vacu, and help us ramp up at, efforts to vaccinate more residents as quickly as possible. I'd like to thank Governor Murphy and his team for working to ensure that federal assistance reaches New Jersey during this time of crisis. Uh, with all that, let's turn now to the business uh, agenda for our meeting. We're gonna start with the county clerk, and I see Clara Fernandez is on the line, so I'm gonna invite Clara to uh, present her resolutions.
Yes, we only have one item. We only have one item, uh, change of names and one of our vendors is retiring, and there is no, uh, there is no effect on the funding. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, uh, thank you, Clara. I'm gonna look at the uh, raise hands. I do not see anybody. Thank, thank you very much, and thank the county clerk for us as well, Clara. Thank you. We'll move to the office of our prosecutor, Prosecutor Rittolo.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. The office has two resolutions for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, is there any questions for our prosecutor? I see Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, prosecutor, can you just elaborate on number one, please?
Sure, the LIM system is a new information tracking management system for our laboratory. Um, it will also be used by our investigative side of the house, too. We'll be migrating from the B system to the LIM system. Uh, the key difference to note is that this is a web-based portal so that all our municipalities um, can, can log in evidence from their municipal buildings using the web-based platform, which will save us money in the long run because they, we won't have to pay for um, updates to them because they don't have licensing. Uh, they don't have the licensing necessarily for the beast, so the county assumes the cost of upgrades on a yearly basis. Additionally, this, the majority of this is being covered by a federal grant, um, because the majority of it was being covered for the DNA side of the lab. Um, the small portion of it that is going to cover the investigative side of the house and the drug side of the lab will come out of um, the Prosecutor's Office trust account, so there will be no impact on the taxpayers.
That's great, Karen. Definitely about, um, being able to provide information quicker when it comes to web-based. That's definitely a great asset. So thank you, prosecutor. Thank you, Chairman.
No problem. It does a lot more. It integrates all the tools. It's, it's. All right, thanks so much.
Very good. Thank you, prosecutor. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Have a great night. Department of Administrative Services Director Scatari.
Good evening. The Department of Administrative Services has five resolutions on the agenda, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Director, I don't see any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to the Department of Corrections and um, Director Charles is, is out and covering for the directors, Rob Cesaro. Uh, and are there any questions related to this uh, resolution or anything, Rob, you wanna say?
Uh, no, I know this is in a, an amendment to a current resolution which is being offered tonight for your consideration, and it's pertaining to the shared service agreement that the department has with SS County for the housing of inmates as needed.
Okay. Terrific. No, thanks for that. Any questions for the Deputy Director? All right, Deputy Director, thank you very much. Give our best to Director Charles, please.
I will, sir. Thank you.
Move, we'll move on to the Department of Economic Development, and that's Amy Wagner, who's the Deputy County Manager. Amy.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Economic Development has six resolutions for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I don't see any. Thank you, Director. Deputy County Manager. We'll move on to the Department of Engineering, Public Works and Facilities Management, and that is Director Graziano.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. I have three resolutions on tonight for your consideration, and I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Uh, Director, I have a question on number three. Can you just go into a little bit, uh, I guess it's just for residency waiver, that's all for number three?
Uh, yeah, so we, um, we have an intergovernmental, in, um, intergovernmental agreement. We're moving, uh, we're taking an employee from Monmouth County, um, and who has twenty years' experience in the, in the recycling business. Also is a, uh, is a sort of, um, a CRP, licensed CRP in the state of New Jersey. Um, has worked, um, uh, in the solid waste field with Monmouth County for on and off for the last twenty years, but he's been with, he's been employed with them, um, uh, for the last twenty years. He also has a big environmental background, education-wise. So I think it's a great move. Um, it should, uh, it should work out well. Hopefully, it's a smooth transition. I'm very confident in it.
Good. Okay, Director, thank you. I'll move to Commissioner Hudak.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Director. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. How are you, sir?
Very good. Uh, Joe, number one, um, we're awarding a contract for pub, through public bid to capital paving and contracting, and that's the two thousand and twenty-one road resurfacing project.
That's correct, sir, yes.
Uh, do you mind giving just a brief overview in terms of some of the highlights of that project? Obviously, you know, of one of the, it's one of the things that the county is most, you know, conspicuously responsible for to our residents. So if you could preview some of like the, the projects that are gonna be coming forth?
Sure. Um, as part of any of our, um, our county resurfacing projects, um, we, we replace all of the, all the handicap ramps along all the roads that we will be paving. This, uh, this here, this is a almost an eighteen-mile pave, so, um, within that, all the, um, every handicap ramp will be replaced. That's on our roads to the current standards. And we're doing paving in probably over one, two, three, four, five, at least, at least fifth, fourteen, I think, fourteen of the twenty-one towns, and we have the twenty-two paving right behind it. So we're right on schedule with this stuff. Hopefully, Capital Paving will do a great job. Um, but we're, we're very excited, and again, um, you know, you know, thanks to this board. Um, you know, uh, I'm to allow this to happen, and this is a, you know, this is a, this is a decent-sized project, and, you know, we're looking forward to it.
Uh, what was the comparison in terms of size and scope to the two thousand and twenty project?
So the two thousand and twenty, twenty project was about twenty-five miles, I believe. Um, or twenty-six miles, but we moved, we actually, there was a road, there was, there was a couple of roads from two thousand and nineteen that we moved on to the twenty project because of a delay in the nineteen project. That's why I bumped that one up. Um, so we're, you know, we're, we're, we're on board for, you know, we average over twenty miles a year in paving, so. And we have a hundred and eighty miles of road.
And we had, so we, there's no carryover from the two thousand and twenty project?
No, no, there's one road, I believe. There's, uh, I don't, I think it might be a road, I think there might be a road in either Raway or Linden that might be a and a, uh, a, a jump over from nineteen. I can get that to you before the end of the meeting.
Is that the, um, it might be Linden where on West, West Elizabeth, probably, where they're doing it?
Yeah, I think we're waiting on, on some of the, right, yeah.
Um, I guess my, my, my last comment in, or question relative to the um, paving, will you be utilizing night paving or with the reduced traffic during the pandemic? Are we doing day paving or some mix? What's your?
So, um, what, what we do every year, we, uh, we always go out to every mayor and every administrator, um, you know, with, with, you know, with direction from the board. Um, we, we would rather do everything at night, um, because it's easier, it's, it's less expensive, there's less traffic on the road. Um, and there's, you have more of a shot at getting done quicker because you get more trips back and forth to the quarry with the trucks to get the blacktop because there's less traffic on the road. Last year, we moved a couple of the roads to daytime because of COVID, just like you said, Chair, um, uh, Commissioner. And it's, uh, it seemed to work okay, but we do take into consideration any mayor or administrator that comes to us after we send them out that, uh, that, that, that letter way early, and we do take it into consideration to put it during the day if, if it's requested through the, uh, local government.
Okay. Well, you know, Joe, keep us updated. I know information's gonna be forthcoming um, from public information, the list of roads, and, you know, you know, so people can plan their, their commutes, but uh, great job. It's an important service the county provides. It's one of the most important services we provide, so good to see that we're, we're keeping pace this year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the questions.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Hudak. Just a quick follow-up, Joe.
Sure.
So we do comparable amount of miles. Is, is the cost commensurate like year to year? Is it pretty, pretty close to seven, eight million dollar cost? Does that stay fairly consistent, too?
It does. Well, everything depends on how many miles we're doing. So, yeah, so we're, we average between seven and nine, sometimes a little bit more, twelve million one year, ten million. So everything depends on the actual mileage of the road. The pave, uh, the blacktop numbers have been staying pretty steady. Um, we'll see what happens if the oil prices go up again, so as, you know, as they are. So next year's job might be a little bit more expensive, but they, uh, everybody bids the same number, so we do, you know, there is, there is room for escalation in there for the contractor if it does happen during that, because everything asphalt is based on the oil barrel prices, so. It's, uh, we're, our, our, our hands are tied as, as far as that goes, but it is public bidding, so.
Understood. All right, well, thank you for that, Director, and uh, thank you for your, uh, for your resolutions. All right, we'll move on to the Director of Fin, the Department of Finance, and that's Director Taylor.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. The Department of Finance has six resolutions for your consideration this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Director Taylor? Okay, Director, I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We'll move on to the Department of Human Services, Director Anderson.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. The Department of Human Services has six resolutions on, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. I see Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, hey, Director. Well, first off, I want to compliment, uh, your entire team on rolling out the homeless vaccination with Johnson and Johnson vaccines. Uh, there's a tremendous job on that. And I know that, um, many commissioners have been visiting the location, and it's been extreme help. As you see, there's lines of individuals who are within that category who are trying to get vaccinated, so thank you in your leadership in that program. Um, but I have a question, reference to number six. I know working with United Way, if you can just elaborate on some of the programs um, that are gonna be taking place with this United Way partnership, please?
I'm sure Commissioner will be happy to. Um, so the fam, the focus on family um, program is working with family success centers throughout Union County, Raway, Elizabeth, and Hillside, um, to name the key partners. It talks about, um, family counseling, access to food, um, it's, uh, financial literacy, so anything to shore up a family in need. So the programs have been established, the, um, Commissioner Board has been in support of this program for a few years. The request of the resolution is two hundred and eighty-six um, thousand dollars, and we are, um, the program is eminent services, so outreach-specific. It really focuses on keeping the family as whole as possible, and it is a good program, and it follows um, a base, a case-based, um, program from the Department of Children and Family, so it's scripted, and we follow best practices.
Thank you very much, Director. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to Commissioner Muddet.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Director. Uh, could you just elaborate on number five, please?
Number five, which is the paratransit?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this, um, so it is the, to improve access to transportation to, for employment. This is a Route twenty-two shuttle that, from Union Springfield and Kennelworth. We partner with, um, Job Access and Re- Reverse Commute um, with the New Jersey Transit. This agreement has been established since two thousand and seven. Um, and today, due to COVID, we are social distancing, um, on the vehicles, so we're able to um, get few drive, few passengers, but we, um, opens back up in beginning of March, and a lot of people are, um, happy that we started back up and transporting them to and from work along the Route twenty-two, um, high route.
Okay, thank you, uh, Director.
Okay, Commissioner Muddet, thank you. We'll move to Commissioner Leon.
Hi, how are you, Director Anderson? A quick question. How many constituents have we served on number five in the past?
So in the past, around, um, about, in since and existence of over seventy thousand passengers. Um, and last year it was about twenty-one thousand. You know, because of COVID, it was a short, maybe twenty-two hundred, um, passengers, um, before the shutdown.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Leon, thank you. Uh, I'm always happy, Director, to see Prevention Links getting funding because they do such great work in the community as well as proceeds. So you're doing a great job connecting all these vital agencies with the people that need them the most, so appreciate that. Anybody else have questions for Director Anderson? It doesn't, ah, yeah, Commissioner Hudak, go ahead.
Twice tonight. Thank you, Chair. Uh, good evening, Director. Uh, just circling back to, you know, comment you made at the, the budget hearing um, the other week, um, regarding the IDRC, we talked about some of the funding dropping from the state. Does this, does this total on the contract for um, for Prevention Links, which, by the way, totally support Prevention Links. I'm just wondering where are, you know, is, is this funding equal to the previous year, or is this reduced funding to the IDRC?
So, um, right now, it's to, it's kind of the same, but it hasn't gone. But, um, the IDRC is revenue-based, so we're hoping that revenue is gonna start trickling in a lot more. So it's, right now, it's flat, um, but we're hoping uh, the state sees that the demands and the people are coming to our programs so that revenue, more revenue come in, more we can extend. So that's kind of why we're January to end of April. We'll see where the revenue stands from there, and then how we extend with Prevention Links.
Yeah, no, um, yeah, if you could just keep a surprise, Director, especially for those grants that are, are impacted um, by the funds that flow through the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse and, and what the impacts of those decreases are, I'd appreciate it. I know that's going to not just impact the IDRC, but our Municipal Alliance Program and other programs, so you know, just as it comes up, I'm, don't, don't, I'm, I'm not picking on you. I just want to make sure, you know, if there's a gap in funding here, you know, we're, we're meeting it, but at the same time, we're letting our state delegation know about it.
Um, absolutely, Commissioner, and, um, we will get you some form of report, um, within the next week or so.
Great. Thank, thank you, Director. Thank you, Chair.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Hudak. Appreciate you. Uh, all right, uh, Director, you got a lot of questions tonight. Very good. Well, well responded. Nice work, as usual. All right, we're gonna move on to the Department of Parks and Recreation, and that is Director Zuber.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Department of Parks and Recreation has two items on tonight's agenda, and I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, all right, I see the Vice Chair has a question. Vice Chair Williams? You're on mute, Vice Chair. Most-used phrase in two thousand and twenty.
Got it. Sorry about that. Oh, gosh. Uh, okay, so, um, I don't have a question on these two resolutions. I, I, I think they're, they're fine. Uh, my question had to do with, um, it's just, uh, how are we doing with the feedback, um, from the community on recreation, parks and recreation? Um, have we been getting a lot?
We've been getting a lot of feedback, uh, based on the two master plans that are currently out there right now. Um, I'd be happy to, uh, to share some of that feedback, uh, with the board, if you like. Uh, we'll choose, we can wait for you to tell me how you want me to present it to you, but we're getting a tremendous amount of, uh, emails, uh, phone calls, and, and believe it or not, we're actually getting letters.
Okay. Okay, great. So I'll defer to the Chairman on that part, but, uh, it's good to hear. Thank you. That was my only question, Chairman. Thank you.
Vice Chair, I'm glad you brought it up. Uh, when is the cutoff for public input, uh, Director?
We, we've, we've technically cut off the Clark Reservoir, uh, master plan already, but since we're still getting, uh, feedback, we're, we're accepting it. Um, we're actually waiting for, um, uh, the draft to be reviewed by New Jersey Conservation Foundation. So we're still taking feedback there. The feed, the cutoff is April second for, uh, the entire Parks Master Plan.
Okay, so I'm sure then, in, in respect to the, uh, the Vice Chair's question, so after that, uh, if you can provide minimally an executive summary, I'm sure it will come with a, a pretty significant um, document with the findings and the feedback and everything. Um, you know, certainly, I think we'd like to, to have some kind of short-term executive summary, and then, uh, as our schedule allows, and as we can dig through the rest of the detail, that would be probably great. Okay? Perfect. All right, anything else for Director Zuber? All right, Director, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the Department of Public Safety, and that is Director Moran.
Good evening, Chair. Members of the board. Department of Public Safety has five resolutions for your consideration. I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Director, thank you. Uh, I see Commissioner Hudak, please, go ahead.
Good evening, Director. How are you?
All right, and yourself?
Good, good. Number, number four, I see that's just, um, a language change, but what's the value of the hazardous materials emergency preparedness planning and training grant?
It's, uh, nine thousand, sixty dollars.
What is that? That's training, I would imagine, at that money, at that level?
Yeah, it, it's, it's abused for, uh, training for our estimate.
All right, very good. And then, number two, uh, or not number two, sorry. My second question related to number five, sorry for the confusion, um, is to advance data processing, uh, so that's the billing for the ambulance.
Correct.
So, out, out of curiosity, because we pay a fee not to exceed up to thirty K, what was the total revenue collected for two thousand and twenty for the EMS? Like, what did we actually, what would we actually collect from that particular service last year?
We collected, uh, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars.
It's pretty good.
That was, uh, that was a little, um, off what we normally collect. Usually, we're between nine hundred off what we normally collect. Usually we're between nine hundred and a million dollars, but I think, uh, COVID, uh, definitely affected EMS and, and its revenues.
Really? Is there any, um, is there any particular, well, I guess if, if specific to COVID claims, I mean, is there, and, and I don't know, this might be just a, some discussion at table, uh, but is there any sort of claim that's out there, be it through the CARES Act funding or FEMA or ARP to, you know, for that revenue if for, for the expense that was lost for the county? Because I, I'm assuming we're just, because from what I've heard, I thought there were more collect, there were more visits due to COVID by the
We had a lot more calls for EMS, but, uh, we had, um, many more patients decide not to go to the hospital back in late March and April, um, because the, a lot of people called nine-one-one and requested an ambulance, but, um, didn't necessarily have to be transported. A lot of people were nervous, anxiety was high. So when they had symptoms of COVID, uh, rather than contacting their doctor, many people picked up the phone, called nine-one-one, which just triggers EMS response, but doesn't necessarily require transportation to the hospital.
Well, I appreciate that, that clarification on both the, the explanation for the change, year-over-year change, as well as with the, the contract. So thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Houdak. We'll move to Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, just a comment in reference to number two and three, the shared service agreements with Clark and Mountain Size. Want to congratulate on Public Safety Department for once again continuing on with the great shared service agreements that you have and continue to provide great services to our communities in Union County.
Well, thank you, uh, Commissioner. These are both renewals. Mountain Side has been with us since two thousand and twelve, and then, uh, Clark joined a year later in two thousand and thirteen. So we're excited to extend the contract.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, anything else? Director Moran, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the Office of the County Manager. County Manager.
Thank you, Chairman. I have one item on tonight's agenda. Be happy to answer any questions. And before we get into my item, I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Houdak's question. We have yet to receive the guidance about the new round of federal funding, but we'll certainly look into that, what's allowable when it's received.
Okay, very good. Any questions for the County Manager? Okay, CM, very good.
Chairman?
Thank you. Uh, we have, uh, Commissioner sponsored, uh, resolutions. Any commentary on that? I don't believe so. Okay. Ah, okay, Commissioner Leon, please.
Um, quick question for the County Manager.
Yeah, please.
I just want to know how, um, this resolution will benefit the schools.
Um, it's a continuation of a resolution that we passed last year with the Cares money to help schools with, uh, COVID-related items. This is just a budget item to balance the books. That's why it's just a ten thousand dollar increase.
Thank you.
Why should we have a Cares grant funding for the school districts that they're all eligible for?
Got it. Thanks.
Okay, all right. Good question. Thank you. Uh, all right. So I think our business of our, uh, agenda meeting is finished. So I will move, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by, uh, Commissioner Kowalski and second by the Vice Chair. Uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. All right, we are completed with our agenda meeting. Jimmy, is there any reason why we need to, uh, wait to go into the regular meeting?
Chairman, we can go directly into our regular meeting. We're good to go.
Okay, so we will do just that. Uh, I'd like to, uh, call the meeting to order the Union County Board of County Commissioners Thursday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, regular meeting agenda. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Here.
Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Houdak.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet.
Here.
Commissioner Stanton. Commissioner Vice Chair Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Mirabella.
Present.
Chairman, you have eight commissioners present for the regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Please lead it, lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag.
Humblely, we ask God to give her peace and the lover of charity to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as we're putting, uh, our video back on, please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey statute annotated Title Ten, Chapter Four, Section Ten of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year twenty twenty-one, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstances to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union or designated to receive such notice and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year twenty twenty-one in the administration building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year twenty twenty-one with the Office of the County clerk.
Okay, Mr. Clark, thank you for that. May I have a motion to approve the communications?
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Okay, moved by the Vice Chair and second by Commissioner Granados. Uh, Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Houdak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in affirmative on the approval of communication.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. May I have a motion to approve the following minutes? January twenty-first, agenda and regular meeting, February first, February fourth, agenda and regular meeting, and February eighteenth, agenda and regular meeting. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by the Vice Chair, second by Commissioner Kowalski. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Houdak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in affirmative on all, um, minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Tonight, we have an ordinance for second reading and final adoption. Clerk of the Board, please read the ordinance by title.
Orders number eight-two-five dash twenty-twenty-one. Bond ordinance to amend section four N of the bond ordinance, ordinance number eight oh eight slash twenty nineteen, entitled bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new additional furnishings, new communication and signal systems equipment, new information technology and telecommunications equipment, and new automotive vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment in, by and for the County of Union, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of forty-eight million, five hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars to pay the cost thereof, to appropriate state grants, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds, adopted July twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on ordinance number eight-two-five, two thousand and twenty-one only. Uh, I'll start to, uh, open up the meeting to, uh, those of, who have registered. If you wish to speak, please note that there is a five-minute time limit, um, and state your name and a town of residence. You will get a, uh, a top, a yellow, uh, indication when you have one minute to speak, and please, uh, acknowledge the, uh, stop at a five-minute mark. All right, um, Mr. Clark, who is, who is first, uh, up for this?
First in the queue is, um, Quanay Chambliss.
Okay, I don't know if any questions about this particular, I, uh, ordinance or anything else, uh, but if you do, please, uh, Ms. Chambliss, go ahead. Okay, does it look like any, uh, comments? Let's go to the next person, please.
Certainly. The next individual is Mr. Bruce Patterson.
Okay, uh, Mr. Patterson, please, uh, make any comments if, on this ordinance, if you wish.
Yeah, um, good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the, uh, Commissioner Board. This is Bruce Patterson of Garwood, New Jersey. Uh, in reference to this, um, I, I understand now that, that forty-eight million dollars is actually back in two thousand and nineteen, and that you're amending, um, that bond ordinance, uh, a few years later, which is odd, but I'm not, I'm not actually questioning that. But I am questioning what the amendment is about. And per the last meeting, the County Manager noted to the public that this amendment is for the renovation of the Red Knot Restaurant at Calippe Hill Golf Course. Uh, just recently by Oprah, we, we now found out, find out, is actually the bar area, not the restaurant. The, the Red Knot Bar was only open for seven years. The bar area, if anyone has seen it, is well-appointed and made of heavy oak and cherry wood, special shelving, chairs and bar equipment, all originally and obviously very, very expensive and paid by the taxpayers. The plans now call for replacing the bar equipment, redoing the bar, floors and patio doors. The cost we have tried to find out, but the county makes numbers wiggly and confusing, but it looks like it's around three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, plus, uh, the fifty-eight thousand dollars to net a architect who's normally your annual campaign donor. So you are taking something that was very expensive to build originally, demolishing it, and then building something more expensive. Normally, there would be a cost-benefit analysis to prove this expenditure out. The public questions on this are, is there a cost-benefit analysis? What gain is this three hundred and fifty thousand dollar expenditure going to get for the taxpayers? And how do we know that this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not just wasted money? And, and by the way, that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it is my rough guess trying to figure out what it is, but you know, that's what I'm right with. Maybe if somebody has a better number, they can talk about that, too. So, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, Mr. Patterson, I'm going to, uh, actually turn that over to the, uh, County Manager who can then direct it from there.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, this is a renovation of Red Knot, not just the bar areas. The caller noted, who was, I mean, he was a little confused about the bar area, but also doing doors and door, uh, floors. So yes, it's the entire restaurant. But we have seen, um, the decline in attendance sort of past few years at Red Knot. It was originally designed as a fine dining restaurant. Now there's a more need for a, uh, more open concept. So that is what design and the new bar will entail. There'll be larger bar area, more open access and more TVs and a more easier approach to the outdoors.
Okay, okay. Very good. Uh, thank you, County Manager. I think that satisfies the, uh, question. Uh, Mr. Clark, let's move on to the next caller, please.
The next individual in my queue is Cynthia Dawkins.
Okay, Ms., uh, Ms. Dawkins, do you have any questions about this particular ordinance?
I, I never put my hand up.
Oh, okay. No, ma'am, we just go through everybody that, um, registered for each of the, uh, public speaking comments, so it's fine. If you want to comment on this, you want to have your comments later, that's perfectly great.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr., Mr. Clark, let's move on to the next person.
Next individual is Eric Larnick.
Okay, uh, sir, the floor is yours if you have a question on this particular ordinance.
Uh, actually, I don't have a, it's, it was just a general public comment for later on. It's not this particular ordinance, but thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, anyone else, Mr. Clark?
Uh, yes, I have a Christina Nikavaska.
Okay. Any comment?
Hi, I, my, my comment is actually also part of the public comment section, so I'll wait till then.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Clark, uh, who's next?
The next individual in my queue would be the last individual, and that is Stacy Gregg.
Okay, any comment?
I also have the, um, you're asking me to start my video. No, I, I wanted to, uh, speak during the public comment, um, but, um, it sounds like an awful lot of money to go for renovation of a place. I don't have enough information. The, um, agendas on your site have, um, that they're both draft, the setting agenda and the agenda for tonight. So that's a concern, but no, the specific agenda item is not why I'm calling this evening. So but I would like to be called on each one because there's no mechanism for comments to speak to the clerk to say when and if on a specific um, a, agenda item that we'd like to speak. So there's, in the future, there's some sort of mechanism that would be nice to be able to do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Appreciate that. All right. Is there anyone else, Mr. Clark?
Chair, that concludes the individuals in our queue, and I did not receive any, um, questions, uh, to be read into the record, uh, relative to this ordinance.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, then, if there's no other comment, I will close this portion of the meeting and, uh, ask, uh, Commissioner Houdak to move ordinance number eight-two-five, two oh two-one for final reading.
Thank you, Chairman. I move ordinance number eight-two-five dash two thousand and twenty-one for final reading and authorize the clerk of the board to advertise same in accordance with the law.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by the Vice Chair. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson. Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Houdak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
And I'll just try, uh, Commissioner Garrettson. Okay, Chairman, you have seven votes in the affirmative on, uh, the bond orders eight-two-five.
Okay, very good, Mr. Clark. Thank you. Uh, I will, uh, now move on to ordinances for first reading. Uh, we have three of them. Mr. Clark, please read the first ordinance by title.
Orders number eight-two-six dash twenty-twenty-one. Capital ordinance of the County of Union, New Jersey, authorizing the providing of funding to Union County Improvement Authority in connection with the Union County Government Complex Project in, by and for the county, appropriating therefore the sum of sixteen million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the capital improvement fund and capital surplus of the county.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. I'll call on Commissioner Houdak to move the ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I move ordinance number eight-two-six dash two thousand and twenty-one for first reading and authorize the clerk of the board to advertise same in accordance with the law. The public hearing and final reading will be held on April the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, thank you for the motion. Commissioner Houdak, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Leon. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson. Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Houdak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Mudet.
Aye.
Commissioner Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson. And Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chairman, you have seven commissioners voting in the affirmative on ordinance number eight-two-six.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. We'll move on to the, uh, please read the second ordinance by title.
Orders number eight-two-seven dash twenty-twenty-one, ordinance authorizing the execution and acknowledgement and delivery by the County of Union of certain of certain agreements in relation to County Guaranteed Lease Revenue Bonds Series two thousand and twenty-one Union County Administration Complex Project of the Union County Improvement Authority.
Okay, again, I'll ask Commissioner Hudak to move this ordinance.
Thank you, Chair. I move ordinance number eight-two-seven-dash-two thousand and twenty-one for first reading and authorize the clerk of the board to advertise same in accordance with the law. The public hearing and final reading will be held on April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
It's been moved. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mude. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Garrettson. Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leone.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson. And Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I think, Commissioner Garrettson?
Yeah, hold on.
Okay, Chairman, that's eight votes in the affirmative for ordinance number eight-two-seven.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. We'll move on to the third ordinance. Please read it by title.
Ordinance number eight-two-eight-dash-two thousand and twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing the guarantee by the County of Union, New Jersey of payment of principal of and interest on the County Guaranteed Lease Revenue Bonds Series two thousand and twenty-one Union County Administrative Complex Project of the Union County Improvement Authority in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding one hundred and twenty million dollars.
Okay, again, I'll move to Commissioner Hudak. Please, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman. I move ordinance number eight-two-eight-dash-two thousand and twenty-one for first reading and authorize the clerk of the board to advertise same in accordance with the law. The public hearing and final reading will be held on April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
Good move, second by Commissioner Kowalski. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes, and can I make a note at the end to indicate affirmative on the other ordinances? I just had to step away for a moment, but I am an affirmative on the other two. I believe I missed the third I got, and I'm caught up.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, please make that notation.
Thank you.
Okay, continue the roll call, please.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leone.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chair, you have eight votes in the affirmative on ordinance number eight-two-eight.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Prior to tonight's public comments for resolutions and other matters, I'd like to now turn over the meeting to Fiscal Chairman Chris Hudak to offer some remarks on the two thousand and twenty-one budget, which is being introduced this evening. Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman, and through you, I'd like to say a few words before we vote tonight to introduce the two thousand and twenty-one budget. As we continue to face the COVID-nineteen pandemic, we are mindful of its profound impact on all residents. As Chairman of the Fiscal Committee, I am therefore announcing on behalf of my colleagues on the board a zero percent tax increase for the second year in a row. This budget funds our response to the pandemic, maintains essential services, including safety net for those in needs, while maintaining our credit rating, which is the highest attainable. This budget provides for our COVID-nineteen test center and mobile testing units, which have tested over a hundred and forty thousand residents thus far. It will continue to fund our vaccination center at King University and in Plainfield and those we assist in Rawway and Elizabeth. We have also begun a mobile vaccination unit with the J&amp;J vaccine and will expand its operations once more vaccine becomes available. This budget also funds our online vaccination portal system and our call-in center to set up vaccination appointments for seniors and others who may not have access to the internet. To date, we have administered over thirty thousand doses of vaccine. That supply has been an issue for every county and state in America. With the recent spike in COVID cases, we must continue to exercise patience and safety protocols. The budget will continue to fund our partnership with King University, where we established a laboratory that is capable of testing residents, processing their samples, gene sequencing for variant strain research, and coordination with our own contact tracing program. This effort is the first of its kind in the entire nation and will act as a source of revenue for decades to come. The budget provides for our weekly food distributions. We have served over two million meals thus far and distribution of more than one hundred thousand masks throughout Union County to many, all of our municipalities. While it's not part of the budget, we also anticipate federal stimulus dollars to flow into Union County. We hope to use it in part to assist our restaurant owners, nonprofits, small businesses, schools, libraries, tenants, and families in need of respite services and childcare. This budget will fund the chairman's initiatives, Union County Rising in two thousand and twenty-one, which includes public safety improvements, support for businesses, our LGBTQ community, upgrades to our parks and recreational facilities, and support for recreational program. As the next step, we will hold an official hearing on the two thousand and twenty-one budget at the board's regular meeting on Thursday, April twenty-second at five-thirty P.M. Upon approval from the state, the board anticipates adoption of the two thousand and twenty-one budget later that evening. I would thank, well, first like to thank my colleagues on the fiscal committee for their work in crafting this budget, which include Vice Chair Williams and Commissioners Granados and Palmieri Mude. I also would like to thank our county manager at Oatman for his work on the executive budget. Special thanks to our CFO, B.B. Taylor, her staff for their tremendous efforts, and again to Director Taylor for having the foresight and diligence to build up a budget surplus that practically started from nothing when she first began working here. And finally, I want to thank our entire family of county employees, our directors, and everyone who put in a tremendous effort in responding to the pandemic this year and also doing a great job to keep Union County affordable. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiscal Chair Hudak. I appreciate your efforts. You did a terrific job. Every time you're the fiscal chairman, particularly this year, in a tough environment, counting for things we haven't seen, but really going above and beyond to do your part along with the Finance Committee as well as the rest of the commissioners, joining your statement of praise for the county manager, the Deputy County Manager, Director Taylor, and the rest of the directors. I couldn't be more pleased to be in a position to vote on this budget. A zero increase two years in a row. Terrific, terrific. Okay, may I have a motion to suspend the rules to allow for the joining of both the public comments on resolutions being offered for adoption and the public comment on any governmental issue that the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the county into one public comment? May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kowalski and seconded by the Vice Chair. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sorry about that, Chairman. Commissioner Garrettson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Leone.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Mirabella.
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative to suspend the rules.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on agenda items as well as other items that may be of concern. There is a five-minute time limit. Please state your name and town of residence, and we will go by those who have registered to make comments. And I will ask the clerk of the board to begin with the first person, and we'll go through the list.
Chairman, the first individual in my queue is Quone Chambliss.
Okay. Ms. Chambliss, please feel free to make your comments.
I'm muting. Am I unmuted?
Yep.
You can hear me? Oh, okay. It still said the host would like to unmute you on my screen.
We got you.
All right, so happy spring, everybody. Good to be here. I'm calling today because I'd like to revisit an issue that we brought up, I believe, two meetings ago, and that is the potential or now actual closing of Union County Jail and exporting our inmates in the Union County system to Essex County. I understand this is being done because the answer I was given, that bail reform has reduced the numbers of inmates so that it costs more money to operate the jail than necessary and that the county could save money if they ship the inmates to Essex County. So the last time we talked, there wasn't any kind of information that was able to be given out. But I believe now there should be some information that should be able to be given out to the public as to if this is being done, why it's being done, what you plan to save. And most importantly, what do you plan to do with the money that you save? Are you going to reinvest it into these communities where the majority of those who offend come from? I mean, exactly what does the county plan to do with this savings as a result of transporting these inmates? And the last thing is, how do we know that they're going to get proper representation from public defenders who now have to travel outside of the county to be able to meet with their clients? I understand there was another issue where some of the public defenders in a county got together and they complained because it put more burden on them to do their job than already burdened system. Thank you so much for taking my question. I look forward to the answer.
Okay, thank you for your comment. I'm gonna turn it right over to the county manager for any commentary and any statements.
Sorry, Chairman, I have a little video issue. Just to address some of the points, I heard some of the public defenders have an issue. I've not heard any issue about that right now. Everything is done via Zoom, which is happening in our county jail and every other county jail in the states. I don't think that would make any difference. But there's nothing on tonight's agenda about closing the jail. But we are, like I said a few weeks ago, exploring all opportunities to streamline county government, and that includes the jail operations. We've met with the union several times to discuss what our plans are, potential plans, so they are aware. We are working with the unions to find employment in other counties or states for any of their members, and that's kind of where we are, but there's nothing final, and there's nothing on tonight's agenda about closing the jail.
Okay, okay. County Manager, thank you for that update. Mr. Clerk, let's move to the next caller, please.
Next caller I have in my queue is a Mr. Eric Larnick.
Okay, Mr. Larnick, please make your comment.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Sure can.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, my name is Eric Larnick. I am a resident of Scotch Plains. I'm just, I'm speaking tonight to actually provide feedback to you all directly regarding the new parks and recreation master plan. So yeah, as I said, I'm a Union County resident in Scotch Plains. I actively use many of the parks across many of the towns in Union County, including Echo Lake, Noah Hegan, Blanape, Greenbrook Park, the Ashbrook Reservation, and the Watchung Reservation. Environmental preservation and sustainability is the major issue that motivates my votes in Union County elections. And I believe that the main priorities for the new master plan for the Parks and Recreation Department should be focused on preservation and restoration and not any further additional development. Native plants and vulnerable wildlife should be protected and prioritized over additional concrete paving, building construction, and artificial surface installation. This past year has demonstrated that in times of community crisis, citizens depend on natural green, open spaces, and fresh air in order to maintain their physical and mental health. Healthy, vibrant parks and natural spaces are one of Union County's only dependable resources that are also totally inclusive for all community members. And as demonstrated by Hurricane Sandy and COVID-nineteen, you will all be impacted by increasingly serious eco disasters in your lifetime. In the future, you will need to depend on young community leaders providing you with healthy environmental resources. But those resources will not be available to you in the future if you fail to lead by example and preserve them now. Of especially important note, mountain biking should remain prohibited in the Watchung Reservation, and that prohibition should be enforced with serious consequences. The reservation is a historic and fragile ecosystem and a unique attraction for the county, and it's your elected responsibility to preserve and strengthen that space. And that cannot be achieved, you know, if we were to serve the interests of a small percentage of hobbyists at the expense of disregarding environmental research and the overwhelmingly majority voice of Union County residents who have spoken on this issue before. In the past thirty days alone, walking trails connected to the deserted village of Feltville have been seriously damaged by trespassing mountain bikers who flagrantly disrespect their shared community space and the laws that you have all sworn to uphold. Mountain biking groups in the past have attempted to leverage their volunteer services on the condition that they get what they want first. However, they've never taken any proactive measures to be genuine stewards of the reservation's ecosystem, nor have they made a serious effort to curb the already illegal mountain biking that occurs in the reservation. You know, these biking groups have also been irresponsible and pushed for approval to develop bike trails before environmental impact studies could be completed. This is the equivalent of giving an A-plus to a child on a book report before they even read the book. Their continued disregard for the reservation and its current state cannot be ignored when they attempt to sell their hypothetical contributions as a bargaining chip. It really needs to be stressed that the development of bike trails will destroy natural ecosystem, put surrounding plants and wildlife at increased risk, and make the area more vulnerable to the intrusion of invasive species. Union County will also need to prepare for increasingly common and stronger winter snowstorms and summertime tropical rainstorms. This change in climate already presents a huge challenge just to maintain the reservation in its current state. Compromising large swaths of land to develop bike trails will have a ripple effect that puts the entire reservation's ecosystem at the risk of damage beyond repair. In my opinion, any new ideas for increased sport and athletic activities should be proposed for already developed landscapes, reuse and maximize the investment that was already spent. You know, I believe in this master plan, Union County Commissioners should prioritize and implement educational and volunteer programs focused on removing invasive species from parks and reservations, planting new trees that will provide sustenance for generations, and community garbage cleanup. You know, I also believe that the Commissioners should pursue the restoration of vital historical landmarks like the deserted village of Feltville and the Homestead Farm of Oak Ridge Park. Lastly, I would implore the Commissioners to seriously explore the extension of an East Coast Greenway along the unused Raritan and Rawway Valley train lines. These unused lines currently do nothing except exist as obtrusive industrial waste. The revitalization of these pathways would sustainably connect multiple towns and encourage thousands of residents to explore activity.
Mr. Larnick, thank you. Okay, good. No, no, thank you very much for your comments. I certainly took from that your passion for environmental preservation and restoration and supported the master plan. The mountain biking is not allowed. And I'm gonna call on Director Zubor and the county manager to make sure that they are aware and looking out for that in the reservation and other places. And, you know, prohibiting it and making sure that people don't do it where they're not supposed to do it. So thank you for those comments. I think we all agree with almost everything you said. We started an open space preservation plan in this county over twenty years ago and have saved hundreds of acres of land throughout our county where it otherwise would have went to development. So I think we're on the same page. So thank you for your comments. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, let's go to the next person, please.
The next individual I have in my queue is Mr. Bruce Patterson.
Okay, Mr. Patterson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commissioner Board. This is Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. Uh, running down the resolutions first. Uh, Resolution 218, and hopefully these numbers are correct. Uh, this is giving thirty-four thousand dollars to Community Coordinated Childcare in Raway for a childcare subsidy program. In researching this firm on the internet, it has no history for the last seven years and no programs provided all that time. It appears someone did not vet this firm out. It is either a bogus front or just a startup company, which means you shouldn't be giving tax monies to it until they have a proven record. The big question, uh, needs to be answered is, who are the principals of this organization? Uh, Resolution 228 and 229. These are two resolutions authorizing the Sheriff's Office and the Prosecutor's Office to exceed their state mandated expenditure cap. For the Sheriff's Office, uh, looking at the budget line item, it looks like it went from twenty-two point three million to twenty-two point five million, which is only a one percent increase and under the two percent cap. So, I don't understand what the issue is here. Uh, we need further clarification. However, for the Prosecutor's Office, the line item went up two point eight percent over the two percent mandated cap. Uh, reading the department's twenty-twenty-one initiatives in the county manager budget, it appears all this cost might be for sending prosecutor personnel out to club meetings and churches to height various issues. As I noted before, we do not have strong management skills in head prosecutor Lindsey Ruotolo, since you sadly, um, made it just a patronage job. In little over one year, she is named in three lawsuits. There's turbulence in her department with favoritism. Now she's blowing through her line item budget. To reiterate, we need a, a person with a depth of experience from within the department. This is a must.
Mr. Patterson, I don't know, I don't know how many times you're gonna continue to bring this up.
Why are, why are you cutting, why are you cutting me off there while my time is here?
Don't worry about my time.
Commissioner Mirabella will come out in support of her, but looking at his patronage town management position in Scotch Plains, he had to hire two people under him to do his job. It, it's like one cook lies and the other swears.
Your comments.
Resolution 231. This is a reso to exceed the county tax levy. The question is, how much are we exceeding the tax levy, or is this just a housekeeping resolution? Resolution 232. Here's the biggie resolution introducing the year twenty-twenty-one county budget. Best compliment I can muster up is, at least you guys tried. You know, combining the three budget hearings into one Zoom meeting was an interesting format, but sadly, the normal requisite of departmental spreadsheets to be exhibited to the public showing salaries, overtime, and other expenses were never revealed to the public. So, we never got to see the actual expenditures from last year to this year as to where the possible eighty to ninety million dollars I know that you guys have in excess money is being hidden. Yes, commissioners asked some questions, but not a single question touched upon dollar expenses are actually saving money as if you half-heartedly participated. The overall county tax impact, you claim is flat, but what you didn't know until I pointed out, it won't be flat to every town based on equalized values. The budget, which was also declared flat for the last two years, actually went up thirty million dollars from four hundred and ninety million to five hundred and twenty million. It's a six percent increase. So, that statement's not true either. It appears that I must be the only one attending these meetings that understands budgeting and financing, proving my premise that Commissioner Hudak, for a second time, failed at being finance chair because of no experience. Overall grade for this year, I give it a D plus. At least, at least the tax dollars stay the same. And I'm sure you're gonna support him too, Mirabella. Resolution 252, uh, resolution supporting a LEAP implementation grant to Berkeley Heights for almost three quarters of a million dollars for dispatch services. I don't understand why is Berkeley Heights getting this three-quarter million dollars? Because didn't Berkeley Heights join your county dispatch a couple of years ago? And Eric, to Eric Larnick, I mean, that was great what he said. The parks have to be maintained as passive. You don't need to do additional stuff with artificial surfaces. I mean, he, he mentioned, he mentioned a lot of items, and I'll tell you, he should put it in writing and send it to you guys, because I support what he said. So, you know, it should be preservation and rest, restoration, not additions.
All right, Mr. Patterson, please, please, you wrapped it up?
Yep, thank you.
All right, very good. Um, I'm gonna go just quickly through, uh, some of this. Director Anderson, is there, uh, any way you can provide some clarity to, uh, to the first item that, uh, Mr. Patterson brought up?
Sure. Four Cs, Community Coordinated Childcare Program was established in nineteen seventy-six. It is a, um, lead childcare agency that is, one, authorized by the state of New Jersey between the Department of Children and Families, two, and the Department of Human Services. This is where all the subsidies sit from the state coming into the county. Every county in New Jersey has a four Cs that is linked to the county. Our program is to help those families that do not hit the subsidy. So, if you're, if you're getting benefits, you do qualify. So, it's that family that just makes a dollar or two more, we're able to help them get childcare, go to work, keep their job so their children are safe. With our stand in the gap funding of thirty-four thousand, in twenty-twenty, we helped eighteen families, thirty-one children, get program and services for the essential workers. That is, the airport worker, the restaurant worker. For those individuals that make dollars but they cannot afford, um, childcare, this is what our funding does, and thanks to the commissioner, we support it. It's a nonprofit organization, um, and they're, um, 501(c)(3), and I am not at liberty to provide what is on their board of trustees because, um, they're in compliance. They provide us with all the, um, documentation that's needed. So, thank you, Chairman, for me to be able to answer.
No, no, thank you, Director. I, I figured, uh, Mr. Patterson was, was wrong and had wrong research and incorrect, uh, data that he threw, throws out there without checking, uh, really just specifically what he's talking about. So, thank you for clarifying and explaining, uh, exactly, uh, what, what we're using that firm for. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, Director Taylor, can you speak just, uh, on a very high level uh, about the sheriff and the prosecutor's budget, why they need this resolution for, um, for, for us to, to move tonight?
Sure, absolutely. Through you, Chairman. First, under Public Law twenty fifteen, Chapter two forty-nine, which was, uh, signed into law on January nineteenth, twenty sixteen, it essentially allows for each constitutional officer, as Mr. Patterson is correct in that vein, to only increase their budget to two percent. However, part of the equation that he is missing is that we have to take into consideration any revenues that those offices generate. The Sheriff's Office, as a result of COVID-19, there is a stay on sheriff's sales which adversely impacts their revenues. So, as a result, there is a need to compensate for that revenue loss that we have seen across the board, and we've detailed last year as well as in this year's budget to make up for those cap implications. He still has to operate. He still has collective bargaining agreements that he has to adhere to. With regard to the Prosecutor's Office, it's important to note that the prosecutor has actually reduced her operating expenses. It is the salary and wage line because of contracts that she has to also accommodate for. And she has done, I will tell you, a, um, yeoman's job as far as trying to hold the line on vacancies in her office and mitigating any increases as a result of new hires. The overall impact on the Prosecutor's Office is actually point three percent, three, point three percent increase over last year, and the, uh, excuse me, point six percent over last year, and the sheriff is point three percent. So, those are all things, even though we are allowing the increase in the levy cap for those individual offices, it is still important to note that it still fits into the overall county budget, which we are still maintaining a zero percent increase.
Okay, so you could say, uh, as well that Mr. Patterson was ill-informed of his, uh, comment before he made it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Uh, we'll move on, and I'll ask the Deputy County Manager, um, to speak, uh, on a very high level on the Berkeley Heights, uh, question that came up, two fifty-three.
Yes, Chairman. What this resolution does is it supports an application that, uh, Berkeley Heights put in for the LEAP grant, which is the Local Efficiency Achievement Program. It's a shared services grant that the state offers annually. Um, they have chosen on their own what they're applying for. In this particular case, from as, what I understand, it's technology um, upgrades that were required for them to make in order to, uh, be compatible with the county system, radios and things like that for all their emergency responders. We have nothing to do with what they're applying for. We're just supporting their application.
Okay. Very good, Deputy County Manager. Appreciate that. Uh, let's move on to the next caller, please.
Chairman, the next individual, um, in my queue is a Stacy Gregg.
Okay. Ms. Gregg, please, uh, make your comments.
I had to unmute.
Okay.
Okay, um.
Can you just state, state your name? We know your name, but you're tied of residence, please.
Yes, Stacy Gregg, uh, in Rockaway.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, um. Don't know where to start. Let me say, since, uh, some of these resolutions brought up some questions for myself, I'm going to, um, ask for clarification when I've done speaking regarding Resolution two forty-eight. It's an extra two, almost two million dollars. It's, uh, one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one for the, uh, county vex six relocation. It's only for two months. Um, I'd like to know why it is that much money. That's one thing that came up. Um, before you grant that, I know you said it wasn't on the agenda to close it. Talking about closing and talking about incarceration of human beings, I'm concerned about Elboron, uh, Management Company and Keene College. It was brought up by, um, your, uh, county, um. I don't have his name here. I had it a minute ago, Christopher Hudak, that you were going into, um, contractor, doing things with Keene College, and I want to make sure that you were aware that the, um, community has called for the resignation of the Keene College Board members. This past month, they, uh, were the Fios, Vi, whatever, the, the president of Keene College was presented with fifteen hundred, um, signatures to deliver, uh, it was President Lamont. The demand is to take Ann Evans Estabrook and her son Dave Gibbons off the university's board because their donations come from an ICE contract that is located in Elizabeth, which leads me to my, um, one of my real two topics today to speak with my five minutes is the, um, county of Union's obligation to inspect, businesses that are run, and I'd like to know, if you don't know now, I'd like to have it for the next meeting or a meeting on the, um, ICE detention center, and when you have had the health inspector, inspector go and examine that place. They failed things. We've had deaths there. Uh, they are not COVID compliant. They are overcrowded. I know you didn't approve the contract, but you're one of four that have ICE detention centers in the state of New Jersey, and you have an obligation to make some sort of statement regarding your, um, position on keeping an ICE center, um, that has had a lot of, um, politicians calling for its closure and the freedom of the people that are in it. And I believe you're all Democrats. I could be wrong, but this is something at the heart of the Democratic Party and, um, not doing forty-five's cruel agenda of detaining human beings just for the simple act of asking for, um, asylum. So, um, that's my main concern is that we get somebody from the Health Department over there and do a report. You, they, you have the authority to do that. Um, it is a part, also, I'd like to see a resolution denouncing human trafficking. It is considered human trafficking. There's also a, um, bill going, um, coming up against slavery, which is on our state of New Jersey's, um, constitution to get rid of that, and under slavery comes running, uh, prisons such as this where they're just giving people subhuman amounts of money to work per day. It, it's, it's slavery continuing on. Um, my other concern is there was a mother in your county in Elizabeth, New Jersey, but the community is helping the mom. She was evicted, and I'd like clarification that there's to be no evictions during COVID. That is a mandate. I don't know if it was just national, but I believe on a, um, state level, it's a mandate to not evict anybody. A mom with a four-year-old child, and, um, the place that we went to, that the, uh, town told us that she could have a night at was unacceptable. And I have the man on recording that I wanted to play, um, where he is saying that he has people from welfare in Union, and he hasn't gotten paid since October. So, I'd like to know, are all your bills being timely paid in the county of Union? This man is suffering. He's a business owner, and he needs help. And there's so many topics there and so many things that are wrong with trying to help the homeless, but I see huge amount of money going for other things in your county and renovations, and you've got a ton of money to help people during this time of COVID, and particularly in housing. And the place that you use for a shelter for people is not acceptable. We have photos of roaches and bedbugs and trash in the hallways, and it's just not nice. You need to pe, treat people nice and, and properly. And this man, I don't want to, the, you know, county to come down on him, but you need to help people. And I would like to play, if anyone on the commission wants to hear it, I would like to hear you. I have it for you to hear him talk about how he did not get paid since October from Union County.
All right, well, your time is up, so unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to do that, but, but thank you for your comments.
Can you answer anything?
Well, I'm gonna try if you, if you, uh, we'll, we'll allow it. Um, so, the issues that you brought up don't seem to be Union County issues. Um, Kane University is certainly an autonomous, uh, body. Uh, it's not Kane College. It's Kane University. So, um, you know, I, I'm not a, aware of any issues there, and it's certainly something for, for that board, uh, to, to discuss. I would, uh, direct my comments, uh, to that board of trustees. Um, the other comment, I guess, on the ICE, uh, and inspections, it's an Elizabeth issue. So, again, it's not, uh, county government, um, controlled issue. So, uh, they're responsible for the inspections. I suggest that you refer your comments to, to that area. And I, I believe you said it was Union that a mother was evicted. Not sure the town. Um, again, um, not really a, a Union County issue. If you, uh, send any specifics, you can, uh, email it to, to me. I'll be happy to get it to the, to the right place where it can be then, um, discussed and, and corrected if, if there, in fact, is an issue. So, I appreciate those, uh, comments. If you get us, uh, some backup or some detail, I'll be happy to, uh, to, uh, to move, uh, it over to the right area that, that can make those decisions. Okay? So, thank you for that. Uh, let's move on to the next caller, Mr. Clark.
The next caller I have on my queue is Cynthia Dawkins.
Okay. Hello, Ms. Dawkins, please go ahead.
I have no questions.
Okay, very good. Okay, well, thank you very much. Let's move on to the next caller.
The next individual is Aslam Ismail.
Okay. Mr. Ismail, please, uh, make your comments.
Do I got this right? Am I okay?
Yes, it seems like you are.
Okay, give me one second. Okay, Aslam Ismail here. I'm the Director of the National United Youth Council Incorporated. Uh, I'm coming here for number one. Um, and hopefully you guys can answer this, and please not be silent on this. Um, I've been getting a lot of complaints from all across the board about this county jail and what you guys are expecting to do with it. Um, I, I hear Mr. Altman said that, um, there's no plan per se on the table. However, why are you discussing people looking for another job if there's no plan? The other thing is that I'm, I'm gonna, uh, just gonna tell you out now that this is a very institutionalized racist impact plan, if it goes through. Why I say that? Well, the fact that about ninety percent of the guards is are black and brown folks, and you disorientate in their life and their, um, pursuit of happiness, if you may, and making their life very miserable, not knowing what's gonna happen if it happens July, like there's a lot of rumors about. Inmate's gonna be impacted because, number one, family can't just arbitrarily go to, uh, uh, to the jailhouse and see their families once this, uh, pandemic subsides. It impact legally because the PDs and the other attorneys that maybe wanna have direct access to their, to their, uh, clients now have to travel to Newark, and it's probably gonna be a whole lot of problem of even getting to them because now Newark can have a whole kinds of, all kinds of policy-driven kind of thing just to see people and all that kind of stuff. So, and there's also impact on their, their legal rights. And I'm sure gonna impact on, um, on the court system and. And I'm sure gonna impact on um on the court system and the judge and um uh setting uh dates for trials and what have you. When you have to have this transition of folks coming from Essex County Jail to Union County courts just to be heard and seen. And I understand there's some visual uh video, whatever they can do, but I'm sure there's gonna be some time where they're gonna be transported back to to the county. I think it's a ridiculous thing. I think it's all about money. And I think what you creating, you better be very careful with, because what you creating indoor is what I call an inmate slave fortress. It's what they used to do when they brought slave from transatlantic slave, they brought them into one condensed area, and then they market them, and that's basically what you're doing. If you're saving money, you're still making money. And if you and if you and if you uh pretty much for the most part, if these guys are getting paid, the Essex County people getting paid for the inmate, it's all about money, and I don't think you should do that with these people live. They have a right. Every right for good legal representation, they have a human right for decency, and those of you who've been watching the news later lately about Essex County jails and what's been happening, guards been locked up, COVID gone off, they they double bumped, all kinds of crazy stuff. So um, Mr. Altman, I think I need to sit down with you and with my colleagues, because if this is something that came from your idea or the chairman, that is just, it's a travesty, and it's irresponsible in and I, again, it's racist at the core. I came to your to your to this meeting multiple time about a number of issues. And I'm gonna go back some time ago, when I came to this same body and Mr. Maribella, you was the chair at that time, when I first introduced our Office on Violence Prevention and Intervention. Nothing came of that, but I see you had since then two viol- two offices, one on women, one on LGBTQ, which is fine with me, but when it's an issue to impact African-American community, it seemed to be a back table. I mentioned also about the twenty seventeen forty-one memorial. That's been almost three gone off four months ago, and you still haven't done it. No one ever still have not called me on that. Again, this county, which is a county that have twenty-four, twenty-seven judges, one are black. The county prosecutor's office have not one assistant African-American prosecutor's office, and I can go down the line with a bunch of 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 no to not to one, and this is ridiculous. But you to do this is inhumane and probably illegal. So I want that to be resisted. I want that to pump the brakes on that, Mr. Altman. I know you're meeting with the the union. You sending out threatening notes to tell them, don't speak, don't associate with Aslam Ismail or anything that you do public, that's ridiculous. And I'm telling you right now, this is not going to happen. This should not go down. This is irresponsible on all your part, and you should be ashamed of yourself.
Okay, Mr. Ismail, thank thank you for your comments. We appreciate them. Um. Okay, I think we've mentioned uh, you know, as much as as we can discuss about the the jail, uh County Manager Altman did present that. I mean, obviously, I reject um Mr. Ismail's claim that this is any kind of a racist issue uh in our county. Um, so I'll leave it at that. I I reject it, and uh it is a basic theory uh about what what he thinks is going on. Uh, I reject it at its core. Okay, uh, Mr. Clark, anything else? Um, anybody else in the in the queue?
Chairman, we have one last individual in our queue, um by the name of Christina Nikowska.
Okay, very good. Uh, okay, we'll get her started.
Okay, um.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, um, my name is Christina Nikowska. I am a uh resident of Scotch Plains. I'm a Union County Parks volunteer and botanist. Um, my my comments pertain to the Parks Master Plan. Um, I I would first like to mention um our great state of New Jersey for some perspective. Um, New Jersey will soon set a national record to be the first uh to reach full build-out. Uh, we're projected to develop all of our existing unpreserved open space in the next half-century. Um, as I'm sure you're aware, in Union County, uh ours is the one of the most developed counties in the state, if not the country, and um we'll reach a build-out easily before um the state is projected to um Union County parks, therefore are an extraordinary resource to um its residents. Um. Residents are fortunate to have a variety of historical, cultural, geologic, and biologic resources here. Um, I want to underscore that the Wachung specifically are a re- unique uh geologic feature in the middle of the Newark Basin and sustain a large variety of uncommon and highly threatened plants and animals, which are specialized to its unique habitat cannot survive elsewhere. Um, I have documented personally many uh rare plants in our parks and submitted reports to the State Natural Heritage Program, um, and I'm certain there are yet more to be uncovered in other parks. Um, their presence here is a valuable educational, scientific, recreational, and cultural resource. Um, they require protection from exotic organisms, protection from pollution, protection from trampling by human means, and as our county grows taller, our parks should grow greener. Um. Many of our parks are choked out by uh damaging exotic plants. Um, these plants thrive in conditions created by human means, such as soil disturbance. Um, and it goes hand in hand with um preventing improper use. Um, when they take root, they change the soil chemistry and make it unsuitable for native plants to survive. Uh, this issue requires sustained effort and neglect contributes to dying off of native vegetation and the higher forms of life that depend on them. Um, the plan, the master plan should prioritize habitat restoration with native plantings. Um, master plan should also incorporate improved signage um concerning the environmentally sensitive areas. The official trails uh should be better blazed to discourage off-trail use. Um, specifically, the Wachung Reservation has many illegally created trails, which should be closed, blocked off, or what have you, um decommissioned. Um. Uh, the master plan should include better educational resources uh for our residents, like guided tours, webinars about park history, culture, and biology would encourage residents to maintain proper use of the trails. It would encourage uh local pride and investment in our county's resources as well as um contribute to our residents' well-being. Um, I I would also like to voice my support for Greenway, as as others have mentioned. Um, and finally, um, the master plan should maintain the current prohibition on off-road vehicles. Um, heavy use is totally incompatible with our parks. Uh, the Wachung Reservation attracts the heaviest illegal use and causes not just erosion but trail damage um and renders many of the trails completely um unusable, like into they they're mud pits essentially. Um. These interest groups who who've pushed for more trails have not effectively policed their own and instead have made it harder for um safe legal use of our parks for our residents. Um, as we have seen during the pandemic, um parks are an invaluable resource for our residents, and this is the perfect time to reinvigorate a base of volunteers and deeper appreciation of our parks for our residents. Um, that's it. Um, thank you for the time.
Well, very good. Well, tha- thank you for those those comments. Um, I appreciate them. Um, I'm sure Director Zubor in in Parks is uh was taking uh some notes, but uh, you know, certainly, I think you you have you you exercising the sentiments of this board, but our care for the environment, and uh I'm sure we need to uh you know, you mentioned uh biking again. I mean, it seems seems like there's something uh going on up there. We need to uh pay close close attention to that, so uh we'll make sure we start doing that for sure. Okay, uh, Mr. Clark, is there anyone else uh that wants to speak?
Chairman, I have no one else in the queue to speak, um, and I did not receive any emails to read uh comments into the record.
All right, very good. Uh, so with that, I will formally close this portion of the meeting and ask um for a motion to adopt Resolutions two zero two one dash two one eight to two zero two one dash two six two. I'm uh.
Chairman.
Moved by Commissioner Granados and seconded by, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Second.
Before we vote, um Jimmy, did you have something you needed?
Chairman, yes, I did. I just want to clarify, um, the the final resolution number to be voted on will be two uh two twenty twenty-one dash two six three.
Okay. All right, so we'll note that two six three. Thank you for that. So with that, uh, please call a roll.
Commissioner Garrettson. Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Muedad.
Aye.
Commissioner State, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And I'll go back to uh Commissioner Garrettson. Chairman Mirabella.
Yes.
Okay, we have we have uh Commissioner Garrettson, okay, and I'll and I say aye too, so thank you.
Chairman, you have
Thank you.
Votes in the affirmative on all resolutions.
Okay. All right, very good. So we're moving now into the uh Commissioner Reports and uh comments. I'm gonna go in in my order here. I don't know if it's the same for all of you, but I will start with Commissioner Leon.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I just briefly want to again thank all of the county staff, directors for their continued work with vaccines, the COVID testing, and now the mobile vaccine unit. Also, the food distribution program continues to help those in need. A big shout out to Director Anderson for running such a smooth operation and the entire Union County staff. In closing, as the month of March comes to an end, I want to salute and acknowledge all the great women that have made a difference through their strength and perseverance for Women's History Month. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to Commissioner Muedad.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I wanted to acknowledge first um our Fiscal Committee Chair, Commissioner Hudak, on a great uh job. I I enjoyed serving on the committee with you this year, and I'm I'm proud of our zero percent increase budget for the second year in a row, so thank you to all who helped make that happen. I also just want to uh bring attention to, now that the weather is hopefully warm uh from this point on, um, our Trailside Nature and Science Center is a great place to take families to to go as an individual. Um, there is something for everyone there, and you can find out more at ucnj.org/trailside. Uh, we have several programs that are happening outdoors in the upcoming weeks, as well as just opportunity to walk and hike, so please take advantage of that. And I also always like to acknowledge uh ucnj.org/falcon. We have on the top of the county courthouse for um uh another year this year, our uh nest that houses a paragon falcon, which is a uh threatened species, and I believe she has laid three eggs already. Uh, but it's a camera that you can watch if you go to the ucnj.org/falcon. You can watch uh the bird, so it's it's fun. If you have kids at home, or um they enjoy, my kids enjoy watching it, so please make sure you check that out, and with that, I will add my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I'd like to add my thanks to my colleagues, the county manager, deputy county manager, and all our department heads for the work on and the fiscal committee for the work on the budget. Uh, very important that we not raise taxes in this time that is so difficult and challenging for so many people. Um, I'd also like to thank the people who uh participated in the uh comments today. Uh, it's good to know that people are paying attention to our Parks Master Plan. Um, we hear uh what you have to say about it, and uh we'll definitely take that all of this into consideration. It seems like we never have enough funding to do everything that we want to do with parks, and that's why we so much appreciate all of the volunteers who help with that. We can always use assistance from uh from anyone who wants to pitch in, and they can they can uh contact uh Director Zubor or the Parks Department about participating in and adopting the park program. Um, as to uh the the comment about ICE, uh Chairman Mirabella uh made the point that we don't have authority there, except I will mention that in the area where we we do have authority, which is our jail, uh there was a request from ICE authorities some years ago that we informed them when uh undocumented people were to be released from the jail, and we declined to do that. We felt that it was not, you know, in the interest of Union County and of our residents for us to uh participate in that kind of a program, and we were, I I believe, among the first state to take that stand, um which uh since then has been promoted by Governor Murphy and Attorney General Graywall. Um, and finishing, I would just like to mention that my hometown of Cranford uh is celebrating its hundred fiftieth anniversary this year, and I was invited to be uh the kickoff, which was a small but uh heartfelt uh celebration uh at the municipal building in Cranford, so uh kudos to uh our Cranford colleagues and looking forward to other activities. Thank you, Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Granados.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I wanna start off by commenting on Bruce Patterson's remarks. Uh, you know, still your lightning chairman this time, but saying that I wholeheartedly um support and know that, you know, US Chairman, our Fiscal Chairman, Chris Hudak, and Prosecutor Tolo are truly assets to the County of Union and to the residents of Union County. And I, along with Commissioner Collins, fully stand behind all of you, because we know that you continue to come in day in, day out in serving the residents and making sure you put them first when it comes to county business. So for that, I just wanna start by saying thank you for your service. Um, second, when it comes to the vaccination program, I definitely want to give a shout out to Department of Human Services for kicking off a program that's working with United Way and having specific focus on homeless and at-risk-to-be homeless individuals. Um, they kicked out this week, and I know there's already been over a hundred easily of homeless individuals who've taken an um advantage of this Johnson and Johnson vaccination. When it comes to Public Safety Department, uh working with, you know, Director Moran, you know, I know um Jess Cohen, Vicky Durbin, the whole entire team behind that program, they continue to make an amazing job when it comes to outreach into the community. And I want to make note, I know, you know, um, they weren't specifically highlighted also, but when it comes to the correction officers who are working at our vaccination programs, they continue to be a great asset, not only to the mobile uh that acts vaccination program, but when it comes to the vaccination program in total. So for that, I just wanna give them a special shout out also. With that said, I wish everybody a happy Easter and a happy weekend. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Granados. Appreciate your your uh kind words. Uh, Commissioner Hudak.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Um, just, you know, just to echo some of Commissioner Kowalski's comments, and and I do remember uh when the board took that stand against ICE detainees, and and well remembered. Um, there it was not too long before that that this county made the affirmative decision uh to get out of any agreements with ICE. Um, you know, that was a decision, another decision this board has made, and I think we we did the analysis of 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 whether that was in the interest of the county to be involved in that, whether it was the right thing to be doing, and we chose not to. Um, you know, we're not asking for credit, but to be clear, our our position on this issue has been clear um or has been documented, rather. Um, you know, in terms of our budget, very proud of the the budget we produced tonight. I would, again, respectfully disagree with Mr. Mr. Patterson, though I I didn't know. I will note that he did add a plus after his day, so I suppose there's progress today in that we're in that manner. Um, and lastly, um, just there were some comments revolving, you know, corrections and and and, you know, some of the the possibilities there. As far as I'm concerned, there's not a proposal yet before the board, and I will certainly look at anything that the county manager proposes um when it's it's time to be considered. I mean, certainly value the everyone who works in the jail and the tough job that they have, uh, and so I I think it's important that we are constantly reflecting on the size of of county government. Um, you know, just in terms of, when I can think of when I was first a uh first member of the Free Order Board, now the Board of Commissioners, um, in terms of what our our annual spend was in the area of corrections. That was money that was deviating away from other places, like education, helping individuals get jobs, housing. Um, and I think that's where we we have to keep our focus, because I agree. This isn't, if any, if we are able to figure something out where we can, you know, streamline our correction services, get those individuals who work there employed and and get a a good uh who work there employed and and get a a good um, situation for the individuals who are in the jail. I, that money needs to be reinvested to making Union County a better place to live and a fairer place to live as well. And I think that's the job of this board, so that that criticism or point is well taken, um, and I certainly take it to heart. Thank you, Chairman.
Uh, well put, Commissioner, thank you for those thoughtful comments, we'll move to the uh, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Williams.
Uh, thank you, Ki- uh, Chairman, um, and uh, again, I want to thank uh, Fiscal Chair Hudak for um, listening to all the import, uh, the input from the members of the Fiscal Committee and again, thank County Manager Altman and uh, BB Taylor and everyone who helped us put this budget together. And um, the other comment that I wanted to make was just to reiterate something that you mentioned, uh, Chairman, in our agenda meeting. And this is just to reiterate uh, and remind folks that we are having um, this uh, virtual uh, town hall on COVID nineteen and how it affects particularly communities of color. Um, we will have some doctors as our guests as well as um, uh, Commissioner Granados, Commissioner State and Commissioner Garrettson. And I will also be a part of the um, uh, sort of framing part of the conversation. Uh, folks can register by going to uh, ucnj.org and um, I know you gave like a really long sort of um, little website there. Uh, but if you go to the um, to our press releases, you go to our COVID site, you'll find the link and you can click on it just to register. Um, it's a very important town hall, we're trying to talk to folks about uh, more access for communities of color within our county as well as any kinds of apprehensions that folks may still feel about the vaccines. The doctors will talk about the different vaccines and what to expect, et cetera. So um, I just wanted to remind folks once again, thank you, Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Williams, I appreciate that and, you know, I want to thank you, uh, Commissioners uh, Garrettson and State and and Granados and 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 all the commissioners, particularly um, Commissioner State, who I think has done a nice job raising the awareness, ensuring that we are reaching out to uh, all uh, segments of our uh, community and uh, and you know, really was a part of the inspiration for the uh, the call on Monday. So I appreciate her and all of you uh, for reaching out to all parts of our county to to make sure that people are aware of the urgency and the need for the vaccination, so thank you. While I'm thanking you, Vice Chair, let me thank you for filling in for me uh, at the last meeting. Uh, many people prefer you uh, running the meeting and I I appreciate uh, your style and jumping in. And I had to be out of state and unfortunately be at a funeral, but I do, I really appreciate you jumping in and and capably running that meeting, thank you for that very much. Um, so, you know, I feel like spring is here, schools are getting back into session. Um, but really, you know, just jumping on some initial comments and and all commissioners likely feel this way. Um, let's not let this be a time where we let down our guard though. I mean, we really want to keep after this uh, virus, keep our masks on, keep social distance as best we can. Uh, keep washing your hands uh, as frequently as you possibly could do. Um, and when it's your turn, get vaccinated and I think Monday's um, session will go a long way towards explaining from our medical community directly uh, why it's important. And I think we, most of us know that. Um, let me also take just a minute uh, to thank the the staff in the county, particularly the volunteers uh, that go come to the testing center, that come to the vaccination center, that come to the food distributions, um, the call center, I mean, these are made up of uh, county employees, uh, people that want to help by volunteering to help their fellow member of the community and and that goes a long way. Uh, I want to particularly thank um, the the labor unions. Um, the county manager and I had a a nice talk with the Labor Advisory Board. Um, maybe a month ago, we had our kickoff meeting for two thousand and twenty-one led by John Del Sorty over in uh, in Scotch Plains uh, and about ten labor leaders. And the one question they asked was, what can we do to help Union County? And the county manager and I said, you know, you can send people to the food distribution. And you know what, the next time they did, uh, and they're rotating through their unions to get people over to help us um, get food out to people who need it the most. So I'm very proud of that, I'm not surprised, though, the unions step up whenever we ask them to help. Um, I do want to put a plug in for the LGBTQ empowerment hour, it is off to a great start in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, the Vice Chair and I had an opportunity to be on the first call this year kicking off and I think the next one's coming up, so check out UCNJ for the next installment of of that uh, offering. It's very important and a terrific conversation. And um, I do want to also uh, wish all Union County residents a happy Passover starting and a happy Easter coming um, next weekend, I don't think we have a meeting before that. So uh, with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Okay, I uh, recognize Commissioner Granados and seconded by Commissioner Muedad, sorry, Vice Chair, thank you. You're always there for me, I appreciate you. All right, uh, Mr. Clark, uh, can you please call the roll and we'll end our meeting?
Certainly. Angela Garrettson, Commissioner Garrettson? Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon? Commissioner Leon? Thought I saw.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Muedad?
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
And Chair Mirabella?
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in the affirmative to adjourn the meeting.
Have a great night, everybody.
Take care, good night.
Yeah, bye.